Members, this is the appointed time. We have a quorum. We start this session on works. I will invite Secretary for Development with Benadette Ling to deliver opening remarks. The floor will now, that will then be open. Members, if you want to ask questions, please press the button now. I will invite the secretary to walk us through the opening. But before that, let me remind members once again that I will give each member four minutes, questions and answers included. Please do make time for the secretary to answer your questions. Because if the time limit is, if the time is up, then you will only get a supplementary answer after the meeting. In all fairness to members following the queue. So without further ado, I will invite the secretary to speak. Chairman, thank you. In this session of the Special Meetings of the Finance Committee, I, together with the responsible officers of the Works Branch, of the Development Bureau and Departments under its purview, will brief members on policy areas under Works' portfolio and respond to members from, questions from members. First, on delivery of public works projects in construction innovation. With the commencement of more land creation in infrastructure projects, members are concerned about construction costs. It is affected by various factors, including the cost of living, manpower supply and demand, wage level, and site constraints in construction projects. We strive to compress construction costs and we are conducting a strategy, strategic study to identify the stress points of construction cost with a view to formulating strategic initiatives to reduce construction costs by making reference to the successful cases, both local and overseas. The relevant work will be completed within this year and will report to the Council in due course. One of the stress points is the challenges facing the construction industry in Hong Kong, including manpower shortage and declining productivity. We will continue to adopt a multipronged approach, including promoting the application of innovation, of innovative construction methods and technologies, and enhancing training quality and quantity to recruit new blood proactively. The Labour Importation Scheme for the construction sector, which has been implemented since July last year as a supplementary measure, also helps alleviate manpower shortage. On promoting application of innovative construction methods and technologies, we lead the industry to adopt high productivity in construction technologies such as modular integrated construction MIC and multi-trade integrated mechanical electrical and plumbing M.I.M.E.P. to enhance productivity and cost effectiveness. We will also shortly brief the panel on development on a series of measures to strengthen the supply chain of MIC modules. In addition, we will establish the government-led Building Testing and Research Institute this year. Apart from research and development activities for innovative materials, construction methods and technologies, it will also devise standards, conduct testing, and provide accreditation in order to attract R and D talent to come to Hong Kong and further promote industrialization of the construction industry. Furthermore, we will continue to encourage a wider adoption of technologies in the industry, promote productivity, and improve site safety through the Construction Innovation and Technology Fund. Specifically, on enhancing site safety performance, we raised the funding ceiling last year and have worked out various packages of a smart site safety system, products for different types of works projects. We are in collaboration with the Construction Industry Council and we are planning a scheme to issue specific labels to work sites that adopt the smart safe, smart site safety system for identification and ease of monitoring with a view to encouraging more private work sites to adopt this system. Next, I'd like to turn to combating climate change. In recent years, Hong Kong has been faced with some extreme weather conditions. The phenomenal rainstorm last September has set off the alarm bells. The Department, the Development Bureau will sub-advise its departments to do best the emergency preparatory and follow-up efforts for extreme rainfall and super typhoons so as to lower the risks of flooding and landslides, as well as that of hazards caused by falling trees and building components under the extreme weather. Our emergency response coordination efforts will also be strengthened. We'll announce specific plans and arrangements as soon as possible. To further enhance the flood prevention and resilience of the city, we have been working expeditiously. We plan to apply for funding from Lajko in the middle of this year to take forward seven stormwater drainage improvement projects, including projects in districts such as Wong Tai Sin and Hong Kong Island East that were hit by severe floods in the past. The Drainage Services Department will in parallel invite tenders for the improvement projects to enable an early commencement of the projects. We're also conducting long-term flood prevention and coastal development strategies for the territory to respond to the impacts of climate change, such as the Strategic Planning Study on Flood Management Against Sea Level Rise and Extreme Rainfall and the Study on Shoreline Management Plan, both of which are expected to be completed in the fourth quarter of this year. On land development projects, in the first session, we discuss plan and planning. Now, the Development Bureau is also responsible for land supply and development. Regarding the northern metropolis, we will commence site formation and infrastructure works. And I'm not going to repeat what I have explained earlier. As for the Kowloon Artificial Islands project, in the last session, again, I responded to the questions from members. So I'm not going to repeat the objectives here. I'll be happy to take questions and comments from members on the Works Branch of the Development Bureau. Thank you, Secretary. Thirteen members would like to speak. Let me read out their names in this order. Mr. Chan Ho Fong, Chan Si Hui Andrew Lam, Eunice Young, Ms. Doreen Kong, Dr. Chow Man Kong, Mr. Lam Chan Sing, Dr. So Chau Ming, Mr. Perry Yu, Mr. Bill Tang, Ms. Chan Ho Yan, Mr. Chan Su Chung, and Mr. Yim Kong. Each will have four minutes, questions and answers included, please. Mr. Chan Ho Fong. I have two questions on OO five and OO six related to the questions that I put relating to tree management. According to the figures here, nine departments are responsible for vegetation and tree management. So this is quite a big establishment. My question is whether we're able to plant more flowering trees on the roadside. And according to the reply, studies should be conducted to look into the possibility. Well, the highways department plants a large number of trees on the roadside every year. Can't we dedicate a section of road to allow a certain flowering species to grow there, to make it a checking spot? It's just like the cherry blossoms in Japan. Do we have the prerequisites to create more checking spots in Hong Kong? I don't see a specific reference to this point in the reply. Let's see if I can get a response here, Secretary. Right, checking spots and trees. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Member, for the questions. We do agree that it would be beneficial for Hong Kong to grow a variety of different species, including flowering trees. In 2018, we promulgated a set of guidelines on tree, trees to be grown in streets. Some eighty percent of trees being chosen, some of them are flowering species. We do allow local as well as exotic species. And these plants serve different functions. So indeed, we promote diversity of trees. And we also have the Greening Master Plan across eighteen districts. Different districts carry different themes. They also have different species for appreciation, including flowering trees. The respective departments are making reference to the guidelines and the handbook on what trees to grow in the districts. In Shamshepo, there is a park with a special species, trees species that create blossoms. And during the flowering seasons, the place has become a very popular checking spot. Mr. Chan Ho Fong. Is it possible to designate a section of the road to create, to grow these trees? Because this can be achieved simply by allowing a row of flowering trees to grow there. It will become a popular checking spot, just like the park in Shamshepo. Well, biodiversity is of course a good initiative. But maybe if it's too diverse, it won't look nice. Right, I note your views. Perhaps in the new development areas, we will strive to locate more such spots. Next, Mr. Chan Si Hui.
Thank you, Chairman. D V B W O one six and O one seven. The questions are put by Mr. Andrew Lam and Mr. Edward Lau about MIC method. In recent years, the government has been taking the lead to adopt MIC method in order to enhance productivity. And over seventy projects in both private and public sectors are adopting the MIC method. In 2023 Policy Address, it was further announced that MIC will be further promoted. This will be done by implementing a series of measures to strengthen the supply chain of MIC modules. And you will also look into the possibility of forming an MIC supply chain. Of course, I support that. But you should not apply MIC method across the board regardless of the site features. There may be special features of the site causing irregularities and you should not use MIC across the board because this will escalate construction costs and make the process slower. So I'd like to have a response from the government on the conditions under which MIC will be adopted. Next, according to the reply, the administration will engage a consultant, a university consultant to conduct a study on MIC. The study will be completed within this year. Now, in relation to a funding scheme, the, yesterday, it was said that in 2022, 23, the Chief Executive Policy Unit funded a project to explore the feasibility of adopting a certain construction method. And there is also another study relating to another construct, MIC construction method. Now, my question is this. Since the administration is going to conduct a study on MIC supply chain, I want to know whether there is any overlapping with the two other projects under subsidy as I mentioned. Do you have any idea when these two studies will be conducted or will be completed? And whether you can create synergy among these studies? And how will you leverage on the outcome of the two studies by the C P U? Secretary, let me take the second question and then on the first question, where the guidelines are available on where and when MIC should be adopted? I will give this question to my colleague. As I said, we would consider investing in MIC modules. That means the investment will come from the government. Now, as we understand, MIC modules are mostly manufactured by the private entities in the mainland. Our study entails making investment on the part of the government so that we build our own MIC yard and help us better understand the MIC ecosystem. Now, the member referred to some studies conducted by universities at the moment, and there is no overlapping. But of course, we maintain liaison with universities on the MIC modules. Where and when MIC should be applied? I'll give the floor to my colleague. We fully agree with Mr. Chan. In 2018, we first introduced MIC in the, and in different sectors, MIC has been adopted in various projects. In some projects, they tended to use more MIC modules and some less. While in some projects, MIC has helped achieve greater efficiency. In some cases, it is the reverse. We are formulating a set of guidelines. We will tell the respective departments under what circumstances MIC should be used in order to enhance efficiency and lower costs and under what circumstances further consideration should be given on using MIC.
Next, Mr. Andrew Lam. I'd like to follow up on my question number zero one six. It's also about modular integrated construction method. I have two questions. I would first like to thank the government for providing the figures. Over the past three years, about twenty projects, including live public housing projects, adopted the MIC method. And the total amount reached fifty billion dollars. And every year, it costs about nine point five billion. In the coming year, six projects will adopt the MIC method and the total cost will be seven point six billion dollars. It shows that the government is adopting this step by step, but we aren't seeing a huge amount of projects adopting MIC. Is it because we have to accumulate enough experience in order to widely adopt an MIC? If MIC is so helpful, we should be able to see a wider adoption of MIC in different construction projects. But from the figures you provided, I'm not seeing the wide adoption. My second question is, how much money can we save by adopting MIC? In your reply, you cited a research conducted by the University of Hong Kong. So the construction cost will be saved by about ten percent according to University of Hong Kong. We can save the use of materials, labor cost with MIC because the modules can be manufactured on the mainland and you just assemble them in Hong Kong. Construction costs saved by at least ten percent is a figure provided by the University of Hong Kong. How about the government's estimate? Two questions about MIC.
Thank you, Chairman. I thank Mr. Lam for the question. Over the past few years, it is mostly government projects or public organizations that have been adopting MIC. We will see more and more projects adopting MIC. For instance, public housing projects. For the first five years, according to the Hong Kong Housing Society, they will adopt MIC. Hong Kong Housing Authority and Hong Kong Housing Society will both adopt MIC in their coming construction works. We are, on the other hand, encouraging the private sector to adopt MIC in their construction works. It's a rather new construction method. So we understand why there is reservation in the private sector. We're offering incentives to the private sector. For instance, we are offering GFA concession to the private sector that adopts MIC. We also see that the quality and efficiency is good for those projects that adopt the MIC method. So in the coming years, we believe there will be more projects using the MIC method. In terms of cost, according to the results of the studies carried out by the University of Hong Kong, construction costs will be saved by about ten percent. But it really depends on how many projects that we are going to carry out and how many MIC modules we are going to use in each construction work. If it is a large-scale construction work, we will see significant drop of expenditure by adopting the MIC method. Thank you, Ms. Eunice Young. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to ask about zero zero nine and zero two seven. In the last session, I asked about the Artificial Islands project. Now I'd like to ask about reclamation works. The government has been looking into how we can make use of technology to lower the construction works or the reclamation works. I'd like to thank the Development Bureau for taking on board the views of the public as well as the sector in terms of making use of, in terms of using technology. According to the reply, the cost for the works in the artificial islands is about five hundred eighty billion dollars. We are yet to see an estimate for 2024, but we can see that about thirty percent of the budget will be used on reclamation works. I understand that the government has been in talks with different groups to explore new reclamation technologies which may help lower the cost. In your reply for O two seven, there is a new office set up in 2019, which is known as the Project Strategy and Governance Office. Apart from MIC for high-productivity construction technology, including DDMS as well as M.I.M.E.P. I would like to know if the office is in charge of overseeing all these technologies. Would you also consider exploring new methods in developing land to further lower construction cost? Thank you, Secretary. On the five hundred and eighty billion dollars. Well, for some of the, this is an estimate that we have come up with, but we are yet to carry out consultation or consultancy studies for the project. So this is a rough estimate. As to whether we will look into, whether we will adopt new reclamation technology, well, the P S G O, Project Strategy and Governance Office, will first look at whether the price is reasonable. As mentioned in my opening remarks, this year, we will set up a Building Testing and Research Centre or Institute, which is led by the government. And we will see how we can make use of technology in our construction works. So we will see how technology can help lower the cost of our works. Ms. Doreen Kong, thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on zero zero six, zero one one and zero one two. In total, there are one thousand five hundred fifty-nine trees managed by the government. We are also seeing a five hundred million dollar of outsourced contract for other companies to help manage trees. I want to know how the administration will coordinate the different tree management personnel within the government. Is there any overlapping of their work? And do they adopt the same standards and systems as they manage trees? Last year, we saw an increase in the number of tree failure incidents from one thirteen hundred in 2020 to forty-seven hundred last year during typhoon. What kind of measures will the government put in place to prevent tree incidents caused by extreme weather? I see that since 2021, there's been an increase of tree management personnel of sixteen percent from thirteen hundred to fifteen hundred and fifty-nine. Will the government adopt technology to help manage trees? My last question is about zero three seven. It's about conservation. I see that every year, the government is allocating millions of dollars to help with heritage conservation, about two hundred million every year. But we have seventy-nine monuments. We are promoting cultural tourism. So I want to know whether the secretary will opt for ways to help promote these declared monuments. A couple of questions, Secretary. Chairman, about heritage conservation, I will invite Ms. Lam, our Deputy Secretary, to respond. As for the first three questions, they're all about tree management. Different government departments are involved in tree management. They are all clear about their remit. Of course, there is some gray area, but over the years, we are seeing a more narrow gray area. In terms of the standards of tree management, starting from last year, we have a dedicated working group led by the Permanent Secretary for Development. And this group regularly holds meetings with different tree management departments to discuss ways to manage trees. On tree incidents caused by extreme weather, I think it is hard for us to prevent a tree failures or collapses of trees during extreme weather. We want to prevent the infection of trees by diseases, even without extreme weather. It is hard to prevent tree failures during extreme weather. So we are seeing a high number of trees that collapsed every year during bad weather. We tried to learn from the practices of other places, but it seems like different places in the world are facing the same problem. We try to plant the right type of trees and through technology, we want to detect the trees that are in poor conditions and we will step up efforts to protect them. Question about conservation, please. Thank you, Chairman. On our promotion and publicity work, we have done a lot. You may be aware that there are exhibitions about monuments and historic buildings. Currently, there is an exhibition being held. We have some ten thousand visitors now at the H D C Heritage Discovery Centre. We are going to have a series of exhibitions down the pipeline. We'll make use of social media platforms such as YouTube and Instagram to help promote our historic monuments. Thank you. Dr. Chow Man Kong, thank you, Chairman. I see that the Development Bureau has been adopting multipronged approach to tackle the manpower crunch. I'd like to follow up on zero one five, which is about the MIC model. The sector has been mentioning about building a big MIC factory in Hong Kong instead of relying factories outside of Hong Kong to manufacture MIC modules because it will help save a lot of money. Over the past three years, about twenty projects from the government that adopted MIC method involving fifty-three point four billion dollars. The government also mentioned that it will study the feasibility of manufacturing MIC modules in Hong Kong. I learned from the news that the government is prepared or planning to invest in manufacturing MIC modules. Where would the money come from and what would be the effectiveness? And to tackle the problem about lack of manufacturer and manpower, in your reply zero two nine, you mentioned that there is a number of training programs. For instance, under the V T C, there is the I. And the, on the pilot scheme, there are three hundred and thirty-three trainees, but the original target is to have one thousand trainees. As you know, in Hong Kong, we are trying to promote applied science universities, apart from Ivy. Would you consider working with different applied science universities to roll out these pilot schemes to train up talents? My other question is about bicycles. Questions zero two five and zero two zero um five one. In Public Works Subcommittee, we talked about the section from Chunmun and So Kunwat, and for every meter, it costs about a hundred ninety uh thousand dollars to build the cycling track. According to the governments, the work may be postponed. I want to know if you are still in progress about this work.
Three questions. M I C, construction manpower and cycle track. Thank you, Chairman. Let me first respond to the point on M I C, and then Permanent Secretary can tell you more about construction manpower training and cycle track. In fact, we have been encouraged by this piece of news recently. In fact, we've signed the Memorandum of Understanding with the Guangdong Provincial Government. This piece of document uh provides how we will explore our role in the M I C supply chain. The manufacturing base, after all, will be in the mainland, because we are short of land, but our role will be focused on testing and certification as well as marketing. That means if we're able to promote it as an, as an industry, we can start manufacturing the M I C modules in the mainland and then have them certified and tested in Hong Kong before even exporting to other countries. So we can form an industry here. Now, we will begin a study on investing in M I C. We haven't done so yet, so we don't have the details. In Hong Kong, we don't have the space to create a manufacturing base, but we can focus on testing and certification. If, however, we're able to set up a small production base, we can help uh with um dev- research and development, construction manpower and training. In the interest of time, let me just very briefly say this. On the construction talent, last year, we rolled out a new scheme. That is, we subsidized part-time students of degree courses. We provided subsidy for one thousand quotas, and last year, we worked with a tertiary institution, and some three hundred quotas have been taken up. This year, we'll continue to collaborate with the post-secondary institutions, and we welcome more collaboration with uh other institutions. About the cycle track between Chunwan and Chunmun, there are three sections. For the section between So Kunwat and Chunmun, we will submit funding application to Latchco very soon. For the remaining sections, it's, they are still at the design stage. Lem, Mr. Lam Ching Sing, D E V B O O eight. Dr. Juny Ho's question um about the progress of public works projects earlier. Some major contractors collapse, affecting a lot of workers and the progress of projects. And in some cases, some subcontractors did not have their license renewed. And according to some, the suspension of the license of these major contractors have affected the progress of major projects. Now, of course, there are problems with site supervision and construction safety. But what if more major contractors have had their licenses revoked? Or even wind up? Have you considered the impact on the overall construction industry? Are there ways to mitigate the impact? Will you be able to engage another contractor in a short period of time? I'd like to follow up on another question, O one two, about the Construction Innovation and Technology Fund, C I T F. This is a very good fund to help promote site safety, but only half of the two point two billion dollar subsidy amount have been approved. Many SMEs are not familiar with the fund. They find it difficult to apply for subsidy. They are not familiar with the technologies available to them. This is not a mandatory requirement by law, but since you have set up the fund, perhaps you should publicize the fund more extensively. You should uh do some handholding and help the SMEs apply for funding. You should, for example, devise solutions uh for the SMEs. In fact, the fund includes uh certain technologies, such as a supervision system in the closed workspace. I think it would be a good idea if more smaller contractors could take up this technology. So my question is whether you're going to promote this fund so that more SMEs can apply for subsidies under the fund. All right, number of questions. First, of course, we don't want to see the winding up of any contractor. But after all, they are privately run, and we cannot eliminate this risk. On the issue of the winding up of major contractors, in order to avoid impacting on smaller subcontractors, we are going to proceed with legislative uh enactment, and that is a protection scheme for smaller contractors. Well, the payment system at the moment may not be fair. Sometimes, you may need to pay in advance to the contractor in order to get a contract. So this piece of legislation will address the unfair terms in these construction projects, so that arbitration can provide a way out to address disputes and to make sure that there won't be delayed payments. For the Construction Innovation and Technology Fund, the fund provides tailor-made solutions for um entities, including the smart site safety system. We also provide briefing sessions for them. Next, Dr. So Chow Ming. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on a question that I wrote in, D E V B bracket W O four two. The administration gave me a very detailed reply. According to the administration, the Architectural Services Department now required installation of a smart site safety system for contracts with some exceeding thirty million dollars. So how many con- works contracts are there with a sum not exceeding thirty million dollars? Because the uh threshold here, here seems to be thirty million dollars. Even for works contracts with some not exceeding thirty million dollars, we still need to improve site safety and the works environment. So for smaller contracts, apart from the usual site supervision, is there any other way to enhance site safety? And perhaps I should ask this other question. What about private development projects? Does your bureau have any means to encourage private contractors to rent or, or use site safety systems? The second question is this. D E V B bracket W O one five, this, this has been referred to by other members as well. About M I C. Now, my question is this. What is the percent, um, I mean, how extensively is the private sector using M I C in percentage terms? According to your reply, you provide incentives and rewards, but I don't think the private sector has been very keen in adopting M I C. I want to know their concern, and I want to know whether there are ways for you to address these concerns. I'm, I feel relieved hearing from you, Secretary, that the Memorandum of Understanding has been signed, and that the prefabricated material manufacturing base will be set up in the mainland. In terms of cost-effectiveness, manpower supply, um, the availability of technology, et cetera. The base should, of course, be set up in the mainland, only that uh you should make the transportation journey as short as possible in Huizhou, perhaps, or somewhere nearby. Right, M I C, I think that you've uh answered this question in quite detail. So you can be a little bit more succinct on smart site safety system. For priv- for the private sector, we provide subsidies for private contractors to install this system. But um the, as far as the progress is concerned, there is more to be desired. It's not, the adoption is not as good as we've expected. So, we're going to put a special label here. If the site adopts the uh smart site safety system, a special label will be put at the entrance. Now, without this label, that means the Labor Department can step up inspection, then they certainly will face more pressure in this regard. About the private sector not being very keen in adopting M I C, I'd say that at the moment, there is one private development project in collaboration with the U R A. There is also another project using M I C, but uh indeed, the take-up rate is not high. Uh, the feedback is that for M I C modules, they come with interior decoration. For the private sector, they want to make things flexible so that they can adopt the latest interior design. The second reason is that uh is because of the vetting process. The government will strive to expedite the vetting process. But still, the major reason is that they want to keep it flexible to change the design. Next, Mr. Perry Yu. I thank the Development Bureau and the A M O for preparing a very detailed reply to my question. For the thirty-nine uh relics managed by the A M O open for the public, according to the figures, seven hundred and sixty thousand visitors were recorded last year. This apparently shows that the relics are welcomed by locals and visitors. Some are really far away, such as a study hall not known to many people. In fact, you recorded a thirty thousand um you recorded thirty thousand attendances. This is a response to the industry's aspiration to further promote heritage tours, so that privately owned declared monuments and relics can be, can receive a subsidy and open to the public for visits. So my question is whether there is a mechanism to further promote uh such a a practice. The other point is that some declared monuments may be open for public visits, but because of resource constraints, the advanced booking is needed. But booking is allowed only for individuals, not for group visits. Even if group visits are allowed, they would turn down the requests of uh travel agents as they are commercially run. This poses an obstacle to our industry. We'd really like to include these meaningful declared monuments and historic buildings in our itinerary as part of our products. Say, there are two declared monuments in Taichou, at Taipu. One is the former Chief Secretary for Administration's residence. The other is a former Taipu police station. These are two um monuments that I would recommend, but it's very difficult to include them in the group tour itinerary. So my question is whether the administration will put in place a mechanism to facilitate group visit bookings by the tourism industry.
The questions are about how we can have more visitors visiting these declared monuments. Secretary. Thank you, Chairman. I would like to thank members for their views on how we can further open up our declared monuments to the public. To be honest, we are yet to see a regular mechanism within the government to open up these declared monuments. These monuments are managed by different departments. Some of them are under A M O and Development Bureau. We are yet to see an interdepartmental mechanism to explore how we can further open up um these declared monuments. We will explore how we can um set up a mechanism to look into this. Mr. Bill Tang. My question is zero seven six. It's about um the regulation that governs overcharging of water. In twenty twenty-three, uh the joint inspection held by the government uh covers some three thousand S D U's, and uh some fifty complaints were received. However, only ten cases saw prosecution. So the government um needs to step up inspection and also enhance the deterrent effect. Now, we have the Waterworks Amendment Bill passed. When it comes into effect, does the government have an estimate on how many uh prosecutions it will institute? Apart from um imposing penalties, the government should also encourage S D U landlords to um install separate water meters. In twenty twenty-three, only three hundred and forty-two uh meters were installed in S D U's. We have um hundreds and thousands of S D U's in Hong Kong. I wonder if the government has any capacity in terms of helping to install separate water meters. Do you have a target on how many separate water meters you will install? Thank you. So this is about handling um overcharging for water in S D U's. I'd like to invite Director of um Water Supply Services to take this question. Thank you, Chairman. I thank Mr. Tang for the question. We are adopting a multi-pronged approach to combat uh water overcharging. We will help up, install water meters, will also step up education efforts. With the passage of the bill, we are going to have a more power to collect evidence. In twenty twenty-three, there was a hundred and twenty-six cases reported, so every year, there were about forty cases. Now, with the passage of the Waterworks Amendment Bill, I believe every year will handle some two hundred cases. So it will be a four to five-fold increase. If we gather enough evidence, we will institute prosecution. On installation of uh water meters. While we were scrutinizing the bill, we saw that um there were more and more S D U's installed with water meters. Apart from landlords, S D U tenants can also ask to have uh separate water meters installed. If the landlord rejects, we will look into why the landlord rejects that. We will ask um for documents from the landlords to conduct investigation. Mister Bill Tang. Some of my questions have not been answered. Would you actually go door to door to um help install water meters for S D U tenants? What is your um estimated target on um the number of water meters that you are going to install? Well, we have enough manpower to install separate water meters for S D U's. We have streamlined the process. Now plumbers can also help install water meters instead of the licensed um workers. Miss Rebecca Chen, I'd like to follow up on zero zero four. It's about community isolation facilities. According to the government's reply, while I'm quite surprised with the situation now because currently, six of the community isolation facilities are on standby. And every month, the cost of maintaining the facilities uh are as I, high as three point seven five million dollars. These facilities are taking up a lot of spaces. My first question is, what is the government thinking? How come you're not making use of community isolation facilities that are on standby? I understand that we have a contingency plan for diseases. And there are three tiered um mechanisms. When you are on standby, so some isolation facilities um will be used and they are the resort facilities managed by L C S D. For instance, the Lady Michael House um camp. How come some of these facilities are on standby? We are in um desperate need of land in Hong Kong. We see that um there are facilities in Pennies Bay and it takes up about sixty-five hectares of land. And the one in Kai Tech, it also takes up a lot of land. Why aren't you converting the facilities into workshops so that young people can, for instance, show their artistic um talents by helping to paint the facade of the facilities? My second question is, again, the Pennies Bay facility is taking up sixty-five hectares of land. If we use this land effectively, then we can help build like a transitional housing in Korn Ha Wai, which will provide two thousand residential units. For those applicants who are waiting for public housing, they should be able to make use of the site. Also, we have negative pressure words in a lot of hospitals. Are we going to leave these facilities idle? Why are we wasting some three million dollars to maintain these facilities while we're not using them? Secretary. First, I want to say that we are not wasting taxpayers' money. We are adopting a safe approach to manage these facilities. We see that COVID pandemic has somewhat subsided, but still there are people who get infected from time to time. We want these facilities to be able to be used as isolation facilities anytime we want. Recently, in Long Ma Chao Lu, we have relocated some of the isolation facilities to other sites. And this is a large-scale relocation of isolation facilities. We want to be able to make use of facilities which were um facilities built by the central government. So over the past few months, we have completed the relocation. And we are confident that for the isolation facilities that are on standby, especially the ones in Hong Shui Kiu, in Fen Ling, as well as uh near the Hong Kong Zhuhai Macau Bridge, we want to be able to make use of them in the near future. So in the short run, we will relocate the isolation facilities in these areas. As for the facilities in Kai Tech and in Pennies Bay, they are um facilities equipped with standalone toilets. They are rather comprehensive compared with other isolation facilities. In Kai Tech, we are uh thinking of taking on board members' views and turn the facilities into arts and cultural facilities. We are exploring how we can make use of these facilities together with the um cruise terminal. As for the facility in Pennies Bay, well, there are certain restrictions that we are facing because of the agreements that we have signed with the Disneyland Resort Company. We can't do anything that may affect the um business operation of Disneyland. So if we build um houses on the site, it will definitely uh breach the restrictive confidence that we have entered into with um the Disneyland Resort Company. The Health Bureau today um mentioned that part of the facilities in Pennies Bay will have to continue to be on standby mode because of healthcare reasons. So I want members to bear in mind that there are certain restrictions that we face in terms of how we can use these isolation facilities. Mister Chow Shiu Chong. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on the question put by Mister Frankie An. The number is zero three three. According to the government's reply, for the first three rounds of the labor importation scheme, a thousands of labor have been imported. We saw eight thousand of imported workers for the first three rounds. Different types of workers working in air conditioning system as well as um metal steel uh or bar bending, they are um saying that they have difficulties with looking for jobs. I want to know if the government will put in place measures to help these workers who are unemployed. And also, will you put a halt on the next round of labor importation scheme for the construction sector? My next question is about zero one one on tree management. Currently, there are nine core tree management departments in the government managing trees. I see that there is a lack of coordination from the tree management office. That's why it's not been very effective for the government to manage trees. I want to um know more about this stati- statistics provided. There are two hundred and nine staff managing trees from the Architectural Services Department. However, according to the government, there are only five staff under Architectural Services Department managing trees. Every year, you spend some fifty million dollars to manage trees. And is that's money uh spent on hiring outsourced workers to recruit some two hundred staff to manage trees, that's why the figure adds up to two hundred and nine. According to um you, under L S D, there are some three hundred staff managing trees. But according to your reply, we have um you have some two hundred staff only, and you spent two hundred and thirty million dollars under L C S D and fifty million dollars are spent on hiring two hundred staff managing trees? Would the secretary consider upgrading the tree management office into a government department? So that it can coordinate all the core management departments to manage the hundreds and thousands of trees we have in Hong Kong? In the short run, will you first consider coordinating all the outsourced contract, outsourcing contracts by the T M O to unify the standards of managing trees to enhance effectiveness on tree management?
Two questions, labor importation and uh tree management. About importing labor, there is a special scheme for the construction sector with a quota of twelve thousand, having considered the manpower projection for the construction industry by the C R C in the coming five years. So they've taken into account pub, the manpower demand for public and private projects. Even when there are fluctuations in the private market, it is difficult to make swift adjustments. Still, for the labor importation scheme, the vetting process is very rigorous. At the moment, only public works projects can apply for imported labor. We do bear in mind that manpower training is an important aspect. For training frontline staff, we are going to train twelve thousand instead of ten thousand people with a view to attracting new blood to the industry. So let me reassure members that we will closely monitor the situation. In the event of any abuse, say, if an employer hires an imported laborer just to sack a local laborer, then we will follow up on these cases and we also welcome complaints from the sector. About the tree management section? Please be succinct. Now, the member asked why we couldn't be set up as a dedicated separate department to oversee tree management across the territory. As the current operation stands, tree management is undertaken by different departments as part of their portfolio. Say, if we have trees on the side of roads and this is under the management of the highways department. So the highways department can also conduct road patrols and manage trees at the same time. So there are merits using this approach. The, our section meanwhile will uphold all the principles we promulgate guidelines and we also have a mechanism to coordinate tree management among the departments. The other question is on tendering. Whether unified approach can be taken? In fact, across different departments, we provide um information for reference. Four more members would like to ask questions. I will draw a line at Doctor Wendy Hong and then I will adjourn today's meeting. Please observe the time limit. Mister Yim Kong.
Thank you, Chairman. My question number is uh oh three six. I have a follow-up question on this reply number. It is said that the government would like to attract major contractors with experience to take part in future bidding exercises to encourage competition. And according to the administration in December last year, new facilitation measures were put in place, which means that the contractors could apply directly for direct entry to Group C with confirmed status under the list of approved contractor for public works without first attaining the probationary status based on their non-local contract experience. Now, my question is about the response after the introduction of the facilitation measures last year. How many non-local contractors have applied for direct entry to the, to Group C in the list? And what is the percentage of uh contractors being mainland contractors?
Right, about the new facilitation measures, Secretary, I will give the floor to the Permanent Secretary, perhaps uh he doesn't have the figures either, given that this measure is new. In fact, we briefed contractors in the mainland and overseas about the new facilitation measures. Um, they were introduced just a, a few months ago. And yet, we have ex, received expression of interest from different uh contractors. So far, we haven't received any application, but uh, but I know they will soon apply. It's just been a few months. Next, Miss Calman Ken. Two questions, oh oh two and oh oh eight, oh oh eight, a question from Doctor Junus Ho. Doctor Junus Ho would like to have a table on public works projects with estimated cost exceeding fifteen million dollars and there are thousands of them. And basically, uh they come under the Capital Works Projects Reserve Fund. Now, my question is on the P S G O. Does this office oversee projects not exceeding fifteen million dollars in estimate? In the coming three years, is envisaged that the capital works expenditure could be contained at about ninety billion dollars on average? And then the government would also accord priority to the projects as per the Financial Secretary's request. I want to know whether this has been done. And then there is also a follow-up question on underground space development. Sixty million dollars have been spent on the pilot study on underground space development in Kowloon Park, that is stage two, stage two of the study. The government is calling a halt to the project. Uh, I'd like to follow up on the progress. And oh oh two, a question from Mister Ben Chan. He asked a question on cost overruns. And according to the administration's reply, forty percent of the works contracts had um cost overruns and the, some in exceedance were met by the contingency provision. Now forty percent is a big percentage. If there is no need to use the contingency provision, will that be a show of appreciation for the departments? Some form of encouragement at least. And how do we differentiate projects that have utilized the contingency provision from those which haven't? All right, three questions, Secretary. Permanent Secretary can take the first question and about the last question. The final contract sum higher than the cost estimate. I'd like to explain to members that this is about the difference between the original estimates in the contract and the final estimates. Say, towards the end of the five-year period, I will do, uh we will um prepare the accounts and then consider how the estimates differ from the original estimate submitted by, submitted to Legislative Council. We'd say that uh we achieved cost savings. But what Doctor Junius Ho asked is about the estimates submitted to Legco and the estimates quoted by bids in the tender. It's not about cost overruns. Right, I understand that that is why we have the contingency provision. The estimates together with the contingency provisions would constitute the final sum that you apply for with the Legislative Council. At the moment, forty percent of the works contracts had their final contract sum higher than the awarded sum. At the moment, forty percent of the works contracts had their final contract sum higher than the awarded sum. I still believe this is on the high side. You should avoid invoking the contingency provision for better project management. Yes, I understand where the member stands, but after all, we need to strike a balance. Uh we want to start tendering as quickly as possible and that is why. Sometimes the estimates prepared before and after tendering may not be the same. About the underground study, underground space study, indeed, we conducted this study in relation to. Kowloon Park and. And the original intention is to make better use of the space at grade to provide retail. And catering facilities, but judging from the current circumstances, we don't think this is an urgent livelihood project. So whilst we need to accord priority to projects depending on the present circumstances, we don't think we should proceed with this project at this moment. But we're not um say no to it forever. All right, there is also another con- question on the project control. Uh perhaps you can supplement your answer in writing afterwards. We have two members waiting, Mister Tony Che. Chairman. D E V B W oh oh three and oh oh four and oh seven seven. These are the three questions I'd like to follow up on. Reply number oh oh three, it relates to the um salary costs for estimate staff. Um I mean resident supervision staff. I think that the resident site staff costs are on the high side. At least four hundred million dollars uh for one project and six million, six billion dollar. Over one billion dollars in total, in other words. I think this will eat into our competitiveness. So my question is on resident site staff management. You have layers of supervisors. Chairman is akin to the site safety system despite layering um multiple layers of supervision. There are still accidents. The the other question is on the C I Fs that have been turned to standby mode. They should not be left idle for a long time simply because they are on standby mode. You should turn, put them to other purposes very quickly. Well, if unfortunately another epidemic happens, you should be able to switch them back. As C I F facilities. About using seawater for flushing in answer oh seven seven. Your answer explains the merits. But in switching from freshwater to seawater for flushing. You need to pay certain costs and I'm asking about cost effectiveness. After. Building the relevant facilities. What is the percentage of households switching from seawater uh freshwater to seawater for flushing? We don't want money to go down the drain because if you have a low utilization rate. Then it is a waste to build these facilities. Three questions. Secretary, for seawater for flushing, I will give the floor to the Director of Water Supplies. And then the P S can take the first question. On C I F facilities, I fully agree with um what the member said. If there are planned uses for the C I F facilities, we'd like to, I mean. Uh for the place where the C I F facilities are situated, we'd like to remove them as quickly as possible. This can be used as the office um for the work site. For other facilities that can allow in situ uses, we are considering purposes that can. Get that will that will provide flexibility, uh subject to constraints, as I mentioned, for example, the site next to Disneyland.
On the question about um resident staff on construction sites. We have to ensure the quality and safety of construction sites and in order to do that, we need professionals to do that. Now, we are adopting N E C, the new engineering contract model. So we're exploring how we can work with resident site staff to. Ensure construction safety. We have wrote out some enhancement measures recently so that professionals can focus on their work. And clerical staff can help shoulder the other types of duties. We try to control construction costs as well, so we will think of whether we can. Reduce manpower to help save cost. Water Supplies Department. Residents in general welcome seawater flushing because it helps save money. However, the water pipes in their buildings may not be able to support that. So we offer technical support to these residents. Next, Doctor Wendy Hong. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to ask about the community isolation facilities as well. It's number zero zero four. I see that in the Long Ma Chao Loop as well as in the northern metropolis, the isolation facilities take up an area of nineteen hectares. Just now, the government mentioned that five hectares of the facilities have been relocated. Among the fourteen hectares of land, how much of them is taken up by the um acute hospital? Can land be released for I N T purposes? Secretary. Land occupied by the emergency hospital will not affect I N T development. Because I T I B currently is planning to build eight buildings. Three buildings are underway now. We are relocating some of the facilities exactly because we wanted to. Release sites for the I T I B so that they can build the rest of the five uh buildings. Does that means all fourteen hectares of land um is taken up by the emergency hospital? Chairman, I do not have the relevant information in hand. I want to however stress that the operation of the emergency hospital is going to bring benefits to our society. And this has, this will not affect the development blueprint of an innovation and technology development. Finally, Mister Michael Lee, I will give you three minutes. And afterwards, we will uh wrap up the meeting. I'd like to follow up on the M I C model. I see that the M I C model can help save cost by ten percent. It will also help shorten uh the construction program. How much money exactly will the government save by adopting M I C? The other question is about zero three three. There is the labor importation scheme for the construction sector. However, we are not seeing enough importation quotas for some types of work. Is it because we aren't seeing enough applicants or is it because you are not providing enough importation quotas? On water seapage. Will the government consider setting aside a sum of money to deploy technology to monitor water pipes? So that once there is water leakage, you can remotely stop the water leakage. Thank you. Three questions on M I C, the labor importation scheme as well as water leakage. Chairman, I'd like to um first invite the Permanent Secretary to respond to the question. Permanent Secretary, it's hard for us to um calculate how much money we can save by adopting M I C. We don't have a formula that allows us to make such calculation. However, it is effective. You can first um make an estimate of how many workers you can save. And then you can come up with the figure. Well, we have to take into consideration other factors. Well, of course, um. Saving manpower is one factor. On labor importation scheme. The applicants submit applications based on the types of work, so it really depends on the construction works they are undertaking. On water leakage. We adopt a multi-pronged approach, for instance, the water intelligent network. We are also carrying out studies with universities. We make use of water pressure as well as optical fiber to detect the source of water leakage. Thank you. Well, thank you all for your cooperation. All members have pressed the button to speak, managed to ask their questions. I now wrap up the meeting today. Thank you all for attending. Tomorrow, the special meeting of Finance Committee will uh start at nine A M. Thank you.